We are starting the Canton Township regular board meeting, the Canton Township Board of Trustees at 6:31 PM. Clerk Segrist, can you please do the roll call?
Microphone on for the folks at home and those in the auditorium. Borninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
And Trustee Snideman.
I made it.
Great, thank you. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session for two purposes. One is to consider to discuss property acquisitions and the other item is to consider material exempt from disclosure or discussion by federal or state statute, and particularly the discussion of attorney's written legal memorandum under MCL 15.268 subsection H.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snideman. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Okay, great, we are going into closed session.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board return from closed session.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snideman. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion approved. The next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the agenda with the two modifications. Adding item C11, consider offer to purchase property under Wayne County tax foreclosure. And we're going to add this vehicle to the general calendar. The John Deere one?
I'm making edit, yes, sure.
And adding item G7, consider approval of purchase of a range vehicle at Pheasant Run Golf Club.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 14, 2022?
So moved.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. All right, now we have public comment on agenda items only. Anyone in the audience for a public comment on agenda items only? Public comment, public comment, public comment. I'm going to look for the attendees online. Any comment from any of the attendees online on the agenda items only? Public comment, I don't see any public comment online, no public comment. Okay, thank you. Next item is a recognition. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, sure.
That's okay, Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snideman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion pass, payment of bills. So before us, we have, please, Ms. Stockline, if you would come to the podium. The Canton Fire Department announces the retirement of firefighter Maureen Stockline today. Maureen Stockline started with the department in 2000 as a public safety service officer. The following year, she was sworn in as a firefighter paramedic. In this role, she was assigned to an ambulance, providing emergency medical treatment to thousands of patients with varying injuries and illnesses. She was later trained as an operator, running the multifaceted fire engines and pumper trucks on fire scenes. In addition to bringing compassion to the job, firefighter Stockline has been instrumental in bringing awareness to the benefits of firefighters' physical fitness, health, and well-being. She played a lead role in many new programs being offered within the department, including various opportunities of peer support, exercise, and nutrition education. Maureen has served our community with hard work and dedication for 22 years, says Chris Stockline, Director of Fire Services. She has set our department on a new path that promotes firefighter wellness, a component of the fire service that has been overlooked in the past, but has since been proven to be beneficial to the employees as well as to the community that we serve. Does any, would you like to add anything to that, Chris? Better be good.
Yeah, go ahead and put me on the spot. I can say this, she's never ended up in my office, so. She was never written up for me, so that was a good thing, right? But, no, I know the department's gonna miss her, I'll miss her, and I, you know, obviously I'm biased, but she's brought a lot of talent to the organization and a lot of positive light to the organization, and I believe that the organization's better off because she worked here with us. So, we'll miss her there.
Would anyone in the audience like to say anything? Debbie? No? Okay, no. How about the board members? Michael?
After Steven, or no?
Oh, I, congratulations, well deserved. But more importantly, as a half-season ticket holder of the Detroit Tigers, I just want to know that this means even more focus on the second half of the season.
It definitely does. We're at the All-Star break, so it's time for their nutrition to kick in.
Yeah. Get them in shape. We got a drive for the playoffs coming up, so. But, they still, they still, they're only eight games out. Only eight games out. We can do it.
We can do it.
So, but no, congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you so much.
Diane, Michael?
I just wanted to say, Maureen, I don't know you extremely well. However, congratulations on a retirement well deserved. And you have done a lot of work for this community, and it has made me proud to read about your accomplishments and what you have done for this community and for that department. And so, thank you for your service and enjoy your retirement. I was gonna make a bad joke about being the number one stock line in Canton Township, but I won't do that, because I still have to work with number two.
Didn't you kind of just do that?
You just kind of made the joke.
I think it was a good joke, though.
Thank you, and thank you for your kind words.
Diane?
I do, I too. I want to thank you so much for all you've given, all of us, not just for the firefighters, but for everybody here. So, thank you, congratulations, and all the best to you.
Thank you, thank you to the entire board, and also thank you to the Board of Directors. I've obviously enjoyed my time here in Canton, but I'm also looking forward to moving on and continuing to kind of help people be the best versions of themselves, which is really kind of what I enjoy doing. So, thank you.
Well, I tell you, I mean, you were on a magazine cover, and you won, I mean, you've been a great inspiration.
Fifteen minutes of fame is probably about done.
Well, no, you also won the, I mean, running up, and how many times did you win that? Running up the Renaissance Center with that back, that pack on your back?
I think that was just once, or maybe twice.
But you're a big inspiration for young women, too, so thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So we want to take a picture with you.
All right.
Board members? All right, that was nice. Bye, bye. We'll give you the plaque later, Chris. Next item on the agenda is a consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented with item C1, consider a proposal award for design of administration building offices in bulletproof glass. Item C2, consider approval for the emergency power repairs admin parking lot. C3, consider approval for the emergency replacement of the transformer at Heritage Park. C4, consider using additional funds for roof replacement in connection with the capital improvement program. C5, consider awarding a contract to Spelling Decker Associates for engineering services on two sidewalk gaps along the ITC corridor. C6, consider increase of the, of $185,403 to PO number listed for the 2022 major roads asphalt project for the 2022 road improvement program. C7, consider second reading of an amendment to Chapter 36 Equal Rights in the Canton Township Code of Ordinances. C8, consider approval for a purchase order increase for the fungicide, or fungicide, at Pheasant Run Golf Club. C9, consider approval of application for MLCC special liquor licenses for Canton Leisure Services. Item C10, request for resolution of local body of government to recognize Salem Rocket's Booster Club as a nonprofit in the community for purposes of making an application for a charitable gaming license to the Michigan Gaming Control Board. And finally, C11, consider offer to purchase property under Wayne County tax foreclosure.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Consent calendar passes. Next item is general calendar. Number G1, consider approval to fill the lead tech position for the Facilities Department.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the increase of headcount and the posting and filling of the lead tech position for the Facilities Services Department.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Yes, installing updates now.
Welcome.
Facilities has recently experienced two promotions. One was a Tech 1 to Facility Supervisor, a merit position, and the second was a Tech 2 to the Tech 1 position in the Ask Me Union. When the previous Tech 1 was promoted, it left not only a physical vacancy, but a licensed certified skilled laborer vacancy. It is being requested to post for the lead tech position that already exists in the Ask Me job descriptions, which has gone unfulfilled for many years. This description requires a skilled trade individual, which will reduce the need for some outside contractors, as well as teach the rest of our team necessary skills such as brazing mechanical diagnoses, refrigerant leaks, and the water leaks, and become a greater asset to the township. Facilities Department is proposing to backfill the current budgeted Tech 2 position, but will make that adjustment and fill the position in the 2023 budget. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
Just quickly, as most of you know, Tom Gaffka was, who was in the Tech 1 position and promoted up to be supervisor within the Facilities Department. So, he was certified, he had some certifications and some licenses, and we now no longer have that in the Facilities Division. And we found that there is a pretty big lack in service there, or a lack of ability, what we can get done in a timely manner without going out to bid or going to, for a contractor. So, we're looking to fill this position because in that job description, it is spelled out in there that we can look for a certified person or licensed person to fill that.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item G2, authorize the purchase and installation of three generic Generac commercial gas series standby generator for the Commerce Park, Hampton Ridge, South Pilgrim Hills, and Wildwood Springs sanitary sewer pump stations from Wolverine Power Systems.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of installation, I'm sorry, I'm gonna start from scratch. I got caught up in the words. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase and installation of three Generac 22KW standby generators from Wolverine Power Systems at 46968 Liberty Drive in Wixom, Michigan, 48393 Hudson, Michigan, and approve a purchase order for a not-to-exceed amount of $74,500.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninski. The Commerce Park sanitary sewer pump station has been in operation since 2001 and services seven large industrial businesses. The Hampton Ridge-South Pilgrim Hills sanitary sewer pump station has been in operation since 2001 and services 247 residential homes in the Hampton Ridge-South and Pilgrim Hills subdivision. The Wildwood Springs sanitary sewer pump station has been in operation since 1993 and services 27 residential homes in the Wildwood Springs subdivision. This Generac standby power system will help prevent basement backups if there is a power failure. The standby generator system will be powered by natural gas and will eliminate the need for diesel generators. Wolverine Power is the lowest bidder in the amount of $74,500 for all three new 22-kilowatt engine-driven standby generators powered by natural gas and installation. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
Just that I apologize that the address was wrong in the resolution. It is actually Wixom, Michigan, not Hudson, Michigan. I'm not sure why that happened there. That got by three of us, so. But other than that, this will be a great addition to our system and help in times of power failure to eliminate, to not have backups in basements.
Any questions from the board or comments? Kate?
Just that I'm glad that we're doing this. As we all know, we've had some historic flooding in the last few years, and I think anything we can do to help prevent any backups, we should do. So, thank you for bringing this to us.
Thanks. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion passes. Next item G3, consider a request to approve letter of agreement between Canton Township and the TPOAM.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the letter of agreement between Canton Township and the TPOAM to allow Public Safety Clerk 3 Christine Skavery to temporarily perform step-up tasks for the Crime Data Analyst, Grade 6 Merit Position, retroactive to May 1, 2022.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snideman. Canton Township is always striving for good rapport with its labor force. Toward this end, a letter of agreement was reached between Canton Township and the TPOAM, Technical and Professional Office Workers Association of Michigan, to allow Public Safety Clerk 3 Christine Skavery to temporarily perform step-up tasks for the Crime Data Analyst, Grade 6 Merit Position, retroactive to May 1, 2022. The deputies, I don't know. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything to that? Joe?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know that Chief Boss is probably happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. This is for, oh, actually Rochelle's here also. Okay. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. Do we know how long this temporary position is intended to go for?
Our employee, Megan, she's back. She had twins, she's happy, everyone's healthy. This is just retroactive, because Christine had to perform some of her job function while she was gone.
That's right. Okay. Well, to Megan Stevenson, who is not only an amazing crime data analyst, but also a rover for Canton Township Elections and a rock star for that, congratulations.
I'll see you just retroactively getting this done, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item G4, reappointment to Downtown Development Authority Board.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Canton Township Board of Trustees reappoint Stephen Brock to serve on the Board of Directors of the Downtown Development Authority of the Charter Township of Canton for a four-year term ending July 12 of 2026.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The State of Michigan Public Act 197 in 1975 enabling legislation for the establishment of a Downtown Development Authority provides for a board of eight to 12 members. A majority of the members must have an interest located in the development area, owner of a property, a business, manager, employee, or a resident, while the remaining members may be citizens at large. This one is reappointing Stephen Brock, who currently works at the General Manager for Szechuan Restaurant, a family-owned and operated business since 1980 located within the DDA District on Ford Road. He just finished his first term on the DDA Board and has expressed his interest in serving the community as a member of the Canton DDA Board for an additional four years. So, he went through our process of, who was on that one? There was Summer and Kate and Amy. Amy was there that day. So, you interviewed him. Would you like to say anything, Summer?
Sure, so we interviewed Stephen Brock, and it was clear his commitment to Canton Township. And Amy Hamilton had great things to say about him, always stepping up to help whenever we need it. So, we are recommending his reappointment to the DDA.
Thank you. Kate?
Yeah, I echo what Summer said, and also hear that Stephen has an excellent attendance record, and is, you know, like, like Summer said, he's always willing to step up and help out. I know, Anne Marie, you told me that he helped pass out pamphlets along Canton Center, I think. So, he's very committed and an asset to the group.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Michael?
I'll just say briefly, so Mr. Brock on Szechuan, which has like been a pillar of Canton for a very, very long time, which, and I obviously support him on the board, but also I was aware that he went door-to-door as well on behalf of the township, which I think, like, there are volunteers who serve on the DDA, and then there are those who work on the DDA. And he is, he's one of the, one of the people who works really, really hard. So, I'm glad that he's being brought forward for reappointment. So, thank you to the people who worked on that committee, and thank you, Madam Supervisor, for the DDA and what's going on. This is gonna be a really important time as we start looking at the Ford Road Boulevard project, too. So, the work that is done on the DDA will be even more important than normal.
Definitely, thank you.
The work.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item G5, consider changing the agent of record to Capnic Insurance Group.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve Capnic Insurance Group as the agent of record. In addition, I move to approve Capnic Insurance Group as the vendor for the township's flexible spending account and Cobra administration.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Human Resources Division is endeavoring to enhance its capability and streamline benefit services to township employees. In order to reach this goal, the Human Resources Division would make Capnic Insurance Group the agent of record for the township and streamline its flexible spending account and Cobra administration with Capnic. Would you like to add anything, Rochelle? Or, I know that she did a lot of hard work in looking at this and determining what was best for our community, our community residents.
Yeah, we're just excited to have this opportunity. I think it's very important that we be able to bring technology to the township, especially in regards to our benefits administration. So, looking forward to being able to make that change and having a smooth transition. In addition to streamlining some of our services with the Cobra and the flexible spending, which is really important for our employees, so I think that it will be advantageous to the township and advantageous to the employees as we move forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Michael?
Just to thank the Supervise Office, thank Human Resources for, I'm really excited about Capnic. I think that they're gonna be great, and I think that it's gonna benefit the employees of Canton Township. And this is consistent with one we talked about, trying to focus on climate and culture as a board goal, so I'm really grateful for that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? This is great, because it will take a lot of the manual work away also, which is, you know, during benefit time, that's been very difficult in a long time. So, I'm sure they appreciate that. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item G6, consider waiving the bidding process and approve the contract from Raptelis to perform a communication assessment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract with Raptelis to perform an organization-wide communications assessment and communications plan for the township, as well as the attached budget amendment.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninski. As recommended in the organizational assessment completed by Raptelis in June of 2021, Canton Township is moving forward with a comprehensive communications assessment, which assesses communications goals and strategy in each department and develops a township-wide communications plan. Raptelis will comprehensively evaluate Canton Township's approach to communications to assure we are spending funds wisely and effectively. Raptelis will complete a seven-point checkup of our communications program. Step 1 examines the environment that surrounds us. Step 2 through 6 examines our internal efforts, the outputs of our work. Step 7 examines the external results or outcomes of the efforts we made around township communications. Together, all seven steps will yield a complete picture of the efficacy of our outreach program, providing a comprehensive and specific idea of what's working and what could be improved. The township will receive a final report that summarizes all findings and provides specific recommendations for enhancing our communications efforts. The Supervisor's Office is requesting to waive the bidding process and contact, I'm sorry, contract with Raptelis to perform a communications assessment, not to exceed $30,000. Joe, would you like to add anything? Deputy Supervisor, Joe?
I know, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Summer?
I have a quick question and a comment. How long does the process take? Did I miss that? The assessment?
Yeah, yeah, so, no, no, you didn't. It's, it's actually in our contract. Raptelis is indicating that they'll be able to complete this process, I think, in about 60 to 90 days.
I just want to say that I'm happy that we're doing this. It's been a long time coming. It feels like it's been like decades since we started talking about it, but we owe me about a year and a half. And I was really impressed with the Raptelis organizational assessment, and I anticipate good work here.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item G7, consider approval of purchase of a range vehicle at Pheasant Run Golf Club.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of a driving range vehicle for Pheasant Run Golf Club in the amount of $15,695.91 to be paid from the account number listed for capital, ally, machinery, and equipment to Deer and Company at 2,000 John Deere Run in Cary, North Carolina, 27513.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The current vehicle at Pheasant Run Golf Club has been repaired numerous times, and the Leisure Services Department is requesting approval of purchase of a driving range vehicle at Pheasant Run Golf Club in the amount of $15,695.91. The Fleet Maintenance Division can no longer repair this vehicle and has declared it to be unreparable. A backup vehicle is currently being used, which is approximately 20 years old, and has already been repaired at least four times since it was put back in service. The intent was to use the current vehicle through the end of the season and purchase a new vehicle next spring. However, this is now an option. Director Homberger, do you have anything to add?
That pretty much states it. Anytime that this vehicle, the current vehicle breaks down again, we have to shut down the course, or not the course, but the driving range. And potentially, sometimes I've had to manually pick the balls from the course to be able to get enough range balls to provide, to service the customers out there. And we're having a record year in terms of usage for the course and the range, so we'd like to get this vehicle, it's still gonna take us from, once we order it. So, they have to manufacture the cage that goes around the, the driving area for the driver, because obviously flying golf balls are not a good thing for the driver. So, it's gonna take about eight weeks to get this vehicle in stock, so we're still gonna be struggling a little bit, but we'd like to get this placed and in place as soon as possible.
Thanks. Any questions from the board or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Great, now we move on to final public comment.
Point of order, Madam Supervisor, I want to do what I do sometimes and go off script real quick.
Okay.
It's not scary. I would like to make a motion that what you read about our retiring firefighter be read into the permanent record of the meeting.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snideman. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. She missed that part, Chris, you're gonna have to tell her.
Tell her forever. The retention period on that is forever.
Forever.
That left her mark on Canton Township forever.
That's okay.
Meeting back.
That's okay.
I like how you qualified that, but it's not scary.
I know, it's not scary. It's like, oh, no. Where are we going? All right, great. Public comment. I'll look online first. Is there any public comment? General public comment? We have public comment for three minutes each person. Any public comment? No public comment online? Nothing online, no public comment. Okay, anybody in the room? Sure, could you please go to the front of the room, and you have three minutes. Please state your name, let us know where you're from.
My name is Thomas J. Tufts. I've been a resident of Canton Township for about three to five years now. What I bring before the Board of Trustees this evening, I apologize, is probably not the most aloof or fun matter to speak of, but as you are all probably aware, as of the news, on Friday, June 24 of 2020, the Supreme Court made a very unpopular decision to basically effectively overturn Roe v. Wade. I was inspired, and I had spent July 4 of this year writing a letter to you all, if I may pass it out after I'm done at the, oh, or.
Not while you talk.
I was very much inspired by what Austin Public Service has done with the Grace Act, and also noted that because of Ann Arbor, you have several dozens, most likely, medical professionals living within Canton Township who would like to know, my significant other being one of them, who would like to know that Canton Township has the back of these, both medical professionals and those seeking essential family planning and medical services. So what I've come before the board tonight to propose and/or at least put on your plate in front of you is something in the mimicry of the Grace Act in Austin, Texas, to make sure that both Canton residents and medical professionals living within Canton are protected by basically the decriminalization and deprioritization of family planning care.
All right, thank you very much. We'll take this into consideration. Thank you. Thank you. All right, do members of the staff have anything to say? Anything to add? Right, I know you do.
Yep, we have a pretty busy week of activities with Leisure Services. We have our second Thursday night concert this Thursday, then we have our Friday camp out, or camp out this Friday night in Heritage Park, and then our Pride, our Pride Outside event this Saturday in Heritage Park. So join us for any or all of these events. We'd love to see you there.
Any other events happening that we don't, this week, this weekend? No? Okay, great. Now, board comments. Kate, would you like to start?
Just hope everyone had a happy Fourth of July, and we haven't met for a while until today, so nice to see everyone again. I am going to be at Pride Outside, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Stephen?
No, I don't have anything specific. Have a great weekend and event this weekend at Pride Outside.
Thanks, Diane?
Just I hope everybody had a good, great Fourth of July and is enjoying their summer. We did get taxes mailed out, so those are out to all our residents. If you didn't receive yours, please call my office. I'm looking forward to Pride Outside this weekend as well. And just a little awareness, July is Minority Mental Health Awareness Month, so it's always a good reminder to everybody.
Thank you, Tanya.
I just wanted, I didn't get an opportunity to talk about Maureen Stockline, but I just wanted to add that I really like how she has taken over, you know, practicing yoga with the public safety officers. I really thought that was a great way to take care of mental health, and I really appreciate that. When I saw that, you know, it came out, I think, a few months ago that this is what the Public Safety Department was doing, and she was leading this, and it was a great initiative, so I just wanted to mention that. And I'm also looking out for the Pride Outside event and attending it this Saturday, and possibly camp out, but I don't know.
Thank you. Summer?
Not much to add, just I did not have the opportunity to attend Pride last year, so I'm very excited to go this year, and yeah, hoping for a great event, great weekend full of events, it sounds like, so it sounds like fun.
Thank you. Michael?
So, before I go into any voting stuff, there were three items on the consent calendar that I want to address because they're important. But sometimes we put things on the consent calendar that aren't controversial, but I think they're worth talking about. The first is closing two sidewalk gaps, which are pretty big ones. One is by the fire station number four and by the dog park, and the ITC trail, the ITC corridor is responsible for a number of gaps in our community. And so, item on consent calendar where we are closing that gap is huge, and I'm excited to see that happen. Additionally, the gap on Cherry Hill Road, leading up to the ITC trail will be closed. Just this morning, when I was driving into work at the township, I saw somebody walking in the street. I'm excited that I will no longer have to see somebody walking in the street. I have seen people pushing strollers on the apron, and while that may be okay in a rural community where there isn't the kind of traffic density that you have on Cherry Hill Road, it's very dangerous at that location. I'm very excited about closing that sidewalk gap, so kudos to the township administration for that. The second one was an increase of $185,000 for asphalt work on Warren Road. One, that is, was one of the worst stretches of road in Canton Township, and it will not be one of the worst stretches of road in Canton Township going forward. But the reason I'm glad we spent $185,000 more than what was budgeted is because we initially were just going to do a mill and resurface, which is the fun thing about asphalt. It's a cheap way to fix asphalt. But in that process, we notified, or we noticed that the base of the road was not sound, and a mill and resurface would degrade within a three- to four-year period of time. And I don't know how many times I have heard residents say, the criticism about road work and any infrastructure work is that after a few years, it looks bad, and I would much rather do it right than do it quick or do it cheap. So I'm very grateful that that item was brought before this board, that we are doing it right. That is huge, and it's a good use of taxpayer money. And then the third one is just that we did our final reading of the Equal Rights Ordinance, and I think it's appropriate that we did that the week before Pride Outside, and it tells everybody where our values are, that we're a welcoming community, and I'm proud of that. Unfortunately, I will not be at Pride Outside or the Friday night campout. I was looking forward to taking my son, Jack, to the Friday night campout and also to Pride Outside, because he had such a good time last year, but it is my grandmother's 90th birthday, and I am going to be spending it with my family. So have fun this weekend at all of the fun events. On top of that, elections are upon us. I mailed out the new voter ID cards to all Canton Township residents on Friday. You should have received them. It is not uncommon to receive a voter ID card for somebody who does not reside at your home. Sometimes when people move out of state and don't notify us, they stay on the voter rolls. Don't worry, they don't vote. What I need from people to do is to put return to sender or RTS on that card and put it back in the mail, because if I receive it with certified mail, I can begin the legal process of canceling that voter. If you bring it to my office, I can't. So please, just if that person does no longer resides at your home, write return to sender, put it in the mail. We will begin the countdown process, and we will all work together on a partnership to keep the voter rolls clean and up to date. On top of that, we are receiving absent voter ballots that were mailed out, and so please, if you haven't voted that yet, vote them and get them back to us, and if not, and you plan on voting in the precincts on Election Day, make a plan and stick to it, and we'll see you August 2.
Thank you. And with some of the things that Michael said, Jay, do you want to give a quick update on the roads? Some of the road construction happening out there?
Sure. So we have, the township projects, we've got, the major one is Canton Center. We have flipped to Phase Three of three phases. I don't want to jinx this, but we are well ahead of schedule. The weather's been very cooperative this summer, so, and if anyone has not driven it, I encourage you to drive what's been done so far, because it has been, it's truly amazing. So kudos to the Engineering Department and the engineers that are on site doing the inspections. Everything's moving along great there. Very little hiccups with the businesses as well. And then we have Beck Road, which is the county project. Unfortunately, I can't speak to how quickly they're moving, they're making progress on that, but I know they're out there diligently working on there as well.
They did just switch directions.
Okay. We're moving forward with our MATS program, with the associations, with the subdivisions, so they're actively doing that. We're on schedule there as well. And then look for a notification in the next couple of days. We just got information from MDOT today, they'll be closing part of Ford Road and the 275, I believe, the southbound entrance for their construction. So we'll, they're putting out a press release. We got some information on that today, though, but it's not gonna happen for another week, so we'll get information on that. And Warren Road, as Michael said, that's ongoing as well.
And we had Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist visit our fire station this past weekend, that he met with the unions, they invited him. Fortunately, the pictures that we have are pretty fuzzy, so we haven't put them out, but Chris, do you want to say anything about that, what you talked about with him?
No, I know we discussed a little bit about the funding for the fire station, obviously, and then some concerns we have with staffing levels throughout the state with firefighters. So I did get a call back from his chief of staff, or an email back from his chief of staff the next day, that they wanted to know a little bit more information about what we can do for that staffing issues. So overall, it was a great meeting, and it was great to see him here in Canton Township, so supports us a lot.
Thank you. I know Wendy's working hard on our inventory with, leading the team effort with that. A lot of hard work there. And then Chad, you, some of the police, we received some outside awards, didn't we?
Yes, we received an award for our work with Narcan. You know, essentially, sometimes we end up at the scene before fire just because we're out, and we get things started, and we've been able to save a lot of lives, so Detroit-Wayne Integrated Health Network has given us, our department's saving some lives for overdoses, so that's gonna happen, I believe, on the 22nd of this month or 20th of this month. So that was a good acknowledgement.
Thank you. And then, of course, our IT department switched us all over to .gov. Some of you are getting emails from us at .gov, and I know that was a big effort, and that's to help make our community safer with mailings to their local government. Did you want to say anything about that, Victor? The team did a great job.
We want to thank everybody for the assistance during the process. It was a hard-fought battle, but we made it.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions that we missed? I see everybody out there. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.